Plaid call a meeting to order if we don't stand for Lord's Prayer.
Just can't consider it. Give us six, sorry. I'm sorry, I want to get to the beginning of it, it's my fault.
Regular township meeting, Thursday, November the 6th, 2014, 7 o'clock PM.
Our Father, in art in heaven, Hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not to temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Humm?
President.
Mr. Garwood?
Here.
And Mr. Minor?
Here.
Fellas, have you had an opportunity to review the minutes of October 16, 2014?
I have, sir, and I move a motion and they be approved as presented.
I'll second that motion, Pat.
Still standard, present it, Pat. You do nice minutes. What you got for us?
I gave you a listing of things here, I'm going to just go down, I don't know if I have them all listed or ordered, but things for you to review tonight. Coming in, car department fire calls received on 11-3, there was only one call for a car fire on SR 11 and at the intersection of State Route 11 and State Route 344. Received a notice from County Engineer's Office that showed a letter of transmittal regarding an approved speed limit revision for Township Road 884, which is Mets, from State Route 7 to Township Road 923, which is Key Creek Road, for a total of 0.6 miles. Reduction of speed limit was agreed to be reduced to 45 mile per hour. Signs must be erected and then the paperwork signed by a trustee to certify and the signs have been erected. Return one original to County Engineer. So we need a resolution, 2014-89.
I'll move that motion, Pat.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Humm?
Yes.
Mr. Garwood?
Yes.
And Mr. Minor? 2014-89. Okay, the next item I have is what I have on my list for the next one is the auditor of state fiscal audit information from 2012 to 2013. I think you all received that in the mail.
You are to be congratulated on that, Pat.
Thank you, Carl. Now, tell me how I want to write this.
If we, we've discussed this before, prior, that we were willing to waive the post audit conference. So the state, we didn't get it, but they sent Pat a form here. So we're going to need a resolution whereby we've elected to waive the post audit conference and authorizing all four of us to sign this document to the state.
That has, let me ask you that, does it have anything to do with the Did I give you my copy or do I have it?
Yeah, I have it here.
Okay. With the one on the back where we have to sign?
This, we'll have to do this separately.
Second, tonight or another?
Yeah, tonight.
Okay, alright.
Because then you've got to mail all this stuff back to them.
Yes, yes. This is to approve the waiver of a post audit conference. And this is resolution 2014-90. And Carl, did you make, did you make that a res-
Yes, I did.
Okay. Mr. Humm?
Yes.
Mr. Garwood?
Yes.
And Mr. Minor?
Yes.
Okay. We may as well do what has to be done with that, too.
And then there's a second document they want us to sign. And it's where we're making representations that, to the best of our knowledge and belief, that our records reflect the true and accurate transitions, transactions and balances.
And that one is to be signed, I believe, from, going from memory, from the chairman of the board himself.
Correct.
You need a motion, does that affect?
Yes.
I so moved, so.
Thanks. Mr. Humm?
Yes.
Mr. Garwood?
Yes.
And Mr. Minor?
Yes.
That was 2014-91.
So I want to give you that. What you gave me.
This is just information I'm going to give you, the, we've received an opt-out notification letter from Integras regarding the natural gas aggregation program for our facilities. And I know we don't do anything with it, but I just want to tell you, we did get that, so they're out enough to get questions from anybody about that. Received an interesting piece of mail that just blew my mind, and maybe some of you know anything about this. I just want to tell you because I avoided it immediately, there is a check that came from Capital Alliance Group in California. A check for $15,965.02, and if you want to negotiate it, you can borrow money from them. A check already made out. I had somebody else tell me in town, they got one, too. I just couldn't, I looked up another, what on earth? It creates a law of some kind. That was-
You know, a lot of times they'll list on there, this is an offer, do not cash this check.
Yeah, no, it's totally available. Just a reminder that the county association dinner meeting is held at the Salem Golf Club this year on the first Wednesday of December at 7 o'clock, so don't need reservations by the 24th. So we have one more meeting before that.
One more.
Okay. For two of you?
I don't know, I'm very busy.
Yeah, okay, it's a little early.
Yeah.
It's a little early. Are we doing anything with the final rumors for Hillcorp? I just made myself a note.
Yeah, I have those tonight, County Engineers sent them through my house, Pat.
Okay, okay, we're going to do this later, right. Okay. I gave Mel a few things tonight, we do have a bill tonight that I need approval to pay. The County Engineers sent us the final payment for Malti Highway project. We already paid $262,000 and the overs, overspray, yeah, the over balance is $7,152.60 to finalize the Crestview Road project.
How much did you do?
$7,152.60.
I'll move that motion.
Okay, just one second, Clark. I know I have, because I just gave you one. Anyhow, we need approval to pay that, so, $7,152.60. County Engineers, balance of Malti Highway paving project. I don't know, but I think that was a great project.
Yeah, we already paid them $262,000, right?
Yes, we paid that before, when we gave them the bid.
So committed $269,000.
Yes, I had it.
2.1 miles of road.
Now, I just had, believe me, I did. But where did I put it? Anyhow. Carl, you made the motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Second.
Mr. Humm?
Yes.
Mr. Garwood?
Yes.
And Mr. Minor?
Yes.
I gave you tonight a copy of a change to the ORC regarding stop signs at passive railroad highway crossings. That's more information than anything. And a couple other things that I gave to Mel, which concerned him about Shelley Company, and that Gauze equipment has been sold to a company called Evolution. And they sent us all this stuff Casey wants to still buy from down there, but it's just under a different name. Let me just quickly go through here. Also, we've got a, and I just have this listed there for whatever reason, Bob will probably address the fax transmittal you got from Casey Talbot, right, Bob?
Yeah.
Couple of things that I stuck in here, but I feel that it's nothing that we're going to handle. International League of Cities, if you want to join and pay a big amount of money to be listed on there. What part? I think that is all I have left. Just to make sure. I'm good.
Mel?
As far as what Road Crew and I have been up to, we finished mowing road sides for this year. We did our October sign inspection. Installed some pipe and catch basins on Apple's Way that you had permits for. Just some routine maintenance on trucking equipment on days where we couldn't be out. We crack sealed the hot mix section of Lower Elton from County 440 to Crestview Road. Ended up using a total of 4,600 pounds of sealer, which is, came in right about where I expected for what I asked for the P.O. for it, so you should get that bill, that should come be, the bill should be $39.50. Total. I think it went well, it was kind of a tedious process, we never did any crack sealing before, but takes a little while to blow them out and move ahead and seal them up and stuff, but I think that's really going to preserve that pavement.
Well, I think you did it well.
Yeah, if we would have been all, probably about a week. Yeah, 2.2 miles of road, it took us about-
You did, you did a nice job, yeah.
Thanks, all.
Looks good now, that, you know, it's right treatment at the right time.
Yeah.
That should help preserve that a little bit.
So I hope that extends the life, it sure should, like I said, once you get out there, start looking, you realize how bad really needed it, you know? So, like you said, we hit it right time. We had our setup and cleanup here for Election Day and other precincts. Set up and picked up signage for the Philadelene Hack Marathon on November 12th. Pat, did you get anything yet from Disco? I was just curious if that got all-
Yes, it's in here.
Yes, there was a bill yesterday.
Yes, there was a-
So it did get- Well, because I take, when the ball on the recycling bin went out, on that pole light, and that was the only place to get that type of light, and I needed some ball packs from the steel building, too. And there was a mix-up in the account after somehow-
What I did was I corrected everything on any invoice to send back to them, to change it to my name.
Okay.
And because his still had some things on it wrong, so.
And I pointed them out, too, like I said.
But I'm sending it back on the invoice, so.
Well, they got out there and charged us stuff anyway, the account had been disappeared, I didn't even know, they said, well, you don't have an account here.
That's, then they finally found it, has Denny's on it, and we sent letters previously to have it all fixed.
And we've been there since, so anyway, I just wanted to make sure we got taken care of.
Yes.
We're also in the process of putting some burn material on some low shoulders on the reclaimed roads where we built up the road, and you know, we've got some low shoulder areas, we're in the process of doing that right now.
On the reclaimed roads?
Yeah. Just some dirty slag from our sweepies and some dirt and stuff, we just blended together what we had on hand here. And then, I suppose, update on what's going on with the Hillcorp activity. I had a meeting here with Steve Burgess from Perth Exquisitions to discuss driveway applications, that's all been taken care of, about location sizing, lengths and stuff. Actually, the culverts have all been installed. No problems there, everything went fine.
Just, this was three sites, the three sites, no?
Just the three sites, yeah.
And you're going to give me a copy, because I can catch up there if you could.
Sure. And also, a meeting also took place here on 10/29 to discuss intersection widening at Woodville and 558, Lower Elton and 558, and Crestview and Lower Elton. Hillcorp, ODOT, R2, Barry, myself were present. They kind of changed what they, instead of coming in from the east and trying to make that hard left-hand turn onto this, and the intersection's already at a bad angle for trying to turn left. They're now going to bring the traffic down 7 to 517, up Ferryfield School, then across 558, so they're turning right, making it an easier turn.
So the rumors are going to be different?
No, it doesn't change anything with us.
Okay.
They did an additional removal of the county for the motor.
Okay, because it's a county road.
So, so where are you, where are you going to turn, Mel?
They're just, they're still using the same intersections, they're just going to be right-hand turns now, instead of left-hand turns. They're coming from, they'd be coming from east and go turn, and go north on them intersections, instead of coming from the west and trying to make that left turn, because you know how 558 intersections are kind of skewed this way, that'd be a tough, tough turn to make.
Okay.
So, that brings us to, Barry presented this, or told me about this tonight here, I looked him over about what we discussed at those meetings, and they have submitted applications to work within the rightaways. One being ODOT's permit and one being AR permit, for them to work inside the rightaways to do these widens.
And the one's a 505, or what, that goes to ODOT? And that sits where the owner of the road? And then that'll, that'll get submitted, and then if there's any changes or anything to the plan that was submitted by R2, that will be changed in a permitting process through ODOT.
How many of these do we have?
That's the one there.
That's it? Everybody wants to see it?
That's ODOT's.
Well, yeah, I think so. I mean, why didn't we have this ahead of time?
I got an email to me about 4 o'clock today.
Yeah, I just printed this off, it's the first I seen.
What's all that stuff?
This is pictures of the intersections and what they're going to do. That would be, did I hand you Woodville and 558, Bob? Yeah. And this is Lower Elton and 558.
Woodville and 558 and Lower Elton and 558.
Well, I might spend some time going through this stuff.
I can make additional copies for everybody, like I said, this is, oh, fresh off the print, so.
You want to review before action, right?
Well, yeah, if we're going to authorize it, I'd like to have an opportunity to do it.
Woodville and 558 and Lower Elton and 558, right?
And Crestview and Lower Elton also.
I don't think there was a 505 for Lower Elton, was there?
Yeah.
There was?
Yeah. Yeah, there's a 505 for both of those intersections, and then AR right away permit for Crestview and Lower Elton.
So there's two rightaways? Right?
There's two 505s for ODOT.
Right, two, I thought you gave me three.
Yeah, and then there's AR that doesn't have anything to do with ODOT, Crestview and Lower Elton.
Did you say two or three, I'm sorry, I've got three written down.
There's three intersections, yeah.
But only two 505s?
Yeah, because that's ODOT's permit. Crestview will be AR right away permit. It'll all come together.
And it's for the same three roads, the rightway?
Okay, I'll make more copies of this after we meet, Bob.
Yeah, well, I appreciate that.
And as if you've been out riding around, you can see that the pads are currently under construction. Haven't had any issues as far as, no issues as far as dirt being tracked out of the road or anything like that, everything seems to be going well. And, actually, yesterday, because it was starting to happen, I did go out and videotape the roads, too, so we'd have a document of the pre-existing condition of the road looking like. So, I did do that, too.
And which roads is that, the same three?
Well, yeah, I videotaped Lower Elton, a little piece of Crestview and Woodville.
Do you see where they got it, in Woodville already? It's right when they're bringing in that soil stabilizer, but they've already been down in the ditch.
Yeah, I did see that.
So we didn't have to have our rumors in place before we did any of this stuff?
No, we gave time to approval at the last meeting.
Yeah, right, I knew that, but I meant that was-
I'm good. Kim?
All right, well, you have my written report, and just let you know that tailing on to the whole well thing, at the last meeting, the gentleman handed me five photos, three of which he said to disretard because they had nothing to do with what they were talking about, and indicated that they might want to make an application in the future. So I did go ahead and email Stephanie detailed, including a link to our website, where it lays out exactly how to do it. That was on the 22nd, I haven't heard anything. So at this point, I have nothing to tell you about any potential application, but if they do follow through, that will keep everyone up to date. 4429-
But they do understand they need to make an application?
Yeah, oh, it's been very clear, and to be fair to them, they had already missed the November deadline, so I made clear that it was the soonest they would get in would be December, and if they want to get on December's calendar, they have to have scheduled to meet with me next week. So I don't want to speak too soon, make a call, you know, Monday, but I'm thinking that they're either not doing it or they're pushing it off a bit. It's a fairly, if you follow through the link I sent her, which is all on our website, it's a very lengthy process. You don't just walk in with five photographs and say,
Right.
"Let's go." So, and I also did-
Because the newspaper generated a lot of calls. You must have done right.
Right.
Sold some, sold some print, right?
But yeah, and we did, I did go ahead and put on the announcements, too, just because people were concerned, and I want them to know what's going on. So we have an announcement detailing that there's nothing going on now, but if there would be, if they ever make, or anyone ever makes an application.
Because the calls I got, people were concerned, I said, no, the process is, they have to make application.
Yeah.
We have a public hearing, all the property owners are notified. And that hasn't happened yet.
And also, I did have a few calls where people were like, well, if I'm not a property owner, how do I know? It'll be on our website, it'll be in the legal notice, and I'll make sure to mention it, and I know Larry will write about it, too, so. We'll be all set, I mean, there will be no secret, I didn't know it was coming, you know? If you're at all aware of what's going on in the area, you'll know what's coming on. And that's with any application, not just, I'm not picking on Hillcorp, it's just I want people to understand that coming into a township trustees meeting and handing us a bunch of paper, me a bunch of paperwork, does not constitute having made an application. And they've been made aware of that. So again, if they decide to go through with it, we'll be happy to entertain their application and get it before the proper board, but as of the 22nd, they have not responded, well, as of today, they have responded to my letter from the 22nd. The election bonds, the signs all look good to me, I've already seen a few of them disappear, but it's the first day after the election, and it is or two days after, and it's raining. As long as everybody's removed their signs from public areas, I'll be returning our election bonds on the 14th of March, too, unless someone tells me differently. And as we have in the past, I don't hold candidates responsible if homeowners refuse to remove them, you know? If Melvin gets a tick in his ear and wants to keep up his "don't drop" sign forever, or whatever he has out, you know, he can do that, but he doesn't, that's why I just turned him on to the website, are you all still okay with that? I only look at public corners and things.
Right.
It's not so much in these elections, but we have had homeowners that, after a presidential election, we had one sign that stayed up for almost a year. They're right, they want to have it.
It's freedom of speech.
Freedom of speech. And 44295 Mets Road has been noted, I appreciate whoever made it happen, with my second letter, you, Bob, or Barry, somehow the plan is aligned, and First Federal and National Mortgage Association decided that maybe they did own that house, so.
Well, I got you a copy of the D.
Okay.
It's Federal National Mortgage Association.
That's who's on the parcel, but you know, when you call them, they, they don't answer.
Well, it was transferred to them back in December 2010 through an estate.
Yeah.
Which has now been closed. So if anyone, and there was an attorney that handled it, so.
Yeah, can I keep that, I have the map here, and I mean, there's not much more we can do as long as the park stays open.
Yeah, I made this for you, so if somebody wants to buy the property, tell them to hire a realtor or hire an attorney and get ahold of these folks.
Go looking for it, perfect. And Barry, and like I said, whichever, did you say that the neighbors said Barry, that the team or crew showed up?
Yeah, they were out there on a Saturday or Sunday, actually, I was out there.
I'm not going to take, I don't know who was responsible, but maybe it was a joint effort, but I really appreciate all the-
Well, those people don't know what they're doing.
And that's all I have.
Because you gave them two numbers.
Yeah, and did you have any luck with either one of them?
They're clues.
Yeah.
No, it's the federal government, it's just-
No, I mean, I have to say, everybody is super sweet, I didn't have anybody rude. It was a very nice, sincere, don't know how to help you, don't know what to tell you. It's almost like you want to go, okay, so no one owns this house, can we just give it to somebody then? Well, no, 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 oh, okay, so you might own it if it comes to time. I just, I don't understand that kind of thing, because, as you know, on the side with these properties like this, I think there's people in the area that would love to buy that house. It's sitting there, and the bank is making it impossible for people right here that might want it to get it. So apparently, they'd rather have that old farm.
Well, that's the D, go hire a realtor.
There you go, well, it is public, so if someone wants to know, they can share that.
That's on record down the court house.
All right, well, right now, it looks as good as it's going to look as far as we can control, so the lawn is, I can't do anything about the condition of the structure, but the lawn looks really nice. That's all I have.
Carl?
My wife wants to know when we will be scheduling January meetings and February meetings. We are, we have been invited to daughter Jones out in California for some time. And she wants to know, so I don't miss too many meetings.
The first Thursday, January, January the 1st.
Yeah, that's curious.
Oh, you don't have to spend New Year's Day together, do you?
I reserve my call-
Not that I don't adore you all, but...
I don't know, would you want to go to the...
Well, we can act on it at the next meeting. You guys, think it out.
They're making plane reservations, so they need to know.
Well, if you look at the five, before those five Thursday month?
Yes, but first you don't understand, the first year's a busy time.
Gotcha.
You know, so...
Yes, and you're right, Pat.
I know, she called and said they're trying to book flights, and I said, "I can't tell you, you guys decide, have to decide what you're gonna do."
Well, we were gonna move it anyhow, because it's on holiday.
Right, right.
So when...
I mean, do you want to go to the first of the next week, or...
I'll go for that. I'm pretty much open. We could do, what's that, Thursdays and the first?
Yeah. Also, you'll mess up my first regardless. I mean, if you want to go on the second, I-
Yeah, I could even do that Friday, you know, or-
You're talking about, you want to know about February also?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, they would just be the regular meetings, wouldn't they?
I don't have a calendar with that long, for that thing.
They are the 5th, the 12th, and 19th, and the 26th of February.
5th, the 9th, the 12th?
5th, 12th, 19th, and 26th are your February Thursdays.
Well, I think-
Because if we do January the 2nd, then the next would be the 14th.
And the 15th.
Well, yeah, the 15th. And then there's a three-week interval before you have the first meeting in February.
Well, February's really not an issue, right?
No.
It's the 5th and the 19th.
Right.
So that's not the issue, the issue is January.
What, what is February?
The 5th and the 19th. Unless, unless they decide to change it. That's the routine, the regular meetings.
And in January, you were gonna make the 2nd and the 15th?
It's okay by me if you want to do that.
Yeah, you're right, what? The 2nd, which would be a Friday, and then the 15th would be a Thursday.
The 15th is the regular meeting, right?
Yeah.
So they only change the Friday.
So we have, that, I don't have a new calendar in front of me. What then is, how many times? Never mind.
What do you, I have a calendar here, pal, just need to-
And 15th, Bob?
Friday the 2nd and Thursday the 15th, and then how long is it between the 15th and the 5th?
Three.
Three weeks.
Okay. Didn't seem like long.
So we're gonna have to, you know, give you authorization, want to sign more checks or something?
Yes, to do payroll, everything.
Yeah.
Oh, I see what you're saying, because your last meeting in December is the 18th. And then you have 1, 2.
It's always the 1st and the 3rd, see? So the only one that really would be changed would be January to the 2nd instead of the 1st.
Right.
Correct?
Right, and sometimes we have a meeting towards the end of December.
Right, but we won't know that till we-
Till later.
Till we get down to the nitty-gritty of that. Which probably would really help, Bob, too, if we, if we did that, but that's, we don't need to know that tonight.
Okay.
So do you want to just-
We'll figure out a day.
You want to just hold off to pass this resolution just so he knows what it's gonna be? Or do you want us to do it?
Yeah, well, the only thing we're doing is changing the meeting from Thursday the 1st to Friday the 2nd. And then all the other meetings remain the same.
All we're, all we're changing is January.
One day, we're moving it, one day.
2nd and 15th.
Correct.
And then February, the 5th and the 19th.
Right, that's just regular meetings. It's always the 1st and the 3rd. And if you want to make that a motion now, it's fine, if somebody wants to do that.
I'll move that motion.
Mr. Hung?
Yes.
Mr. Carwood?
Yes.
And Mr. Minor?
Yes.
Okay, that was resolution number... I don't think I usually put those in resolutions, come on, let's give it one. While we're out here. You can have the resolutions, did you hear me?
Purchase, what are you saying?
1492, not from that. 201493. Okay.
Okay. Any off, Carl?
No, that's all, sir.
Barry?
I've got the rubbers, county engineer sent those with sign-offs. There's three rubbers. Woodville, Lower Elton-
And they're just as they were made, except they're, these are the sign-ups.
They were, and they're just a sign one where we just need to have signatures. We didn't have them prior to last meeting.
Right, and, duh, 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 what is my copy number?
The date. Are we gonna, is that gonna be the last meeting? Or tonight?
I think since we gave the temporary approval, we'd probably go last meeting, couldn't we?
Yeah, I would agree.
Because I'm not sure when did, when did the county sign off? County was signing off beforehand, you know?
Yeah. Now, Hillcorp signed on the 14th, Andy and the engineer signed on the 15th. Our meeting was on the 16th, right?
Yeah, so it was probably the 16th to work, right?
Yeah.
I must not have picked out my room, because I thought I had them. I don't have them with me, guys, I guess. I don't see one. Probably in the rubbers.
Well, Barry just gave me one.
Okay. Because I have them attached here. I'll send something, right?
No, no.
Yeah, we just had, like, draft copies.
So we're not gonna do another one, too? We gave a temporary authority, we're gonna do a final authority tonight, correct?
Well, no, we're just signing them.
And I don't need to, another resolution? Okay.
Because we authorized all this at the last meeting.
Okay. But I would like a copy, too.
Yes.
Seems I can't find mine right now. Do not need.
And there's two of them, there's one from home. If you take the big paper clips off.
Did you?
I know that. I just took them down. That was resolution number 201485, was the resolution number.
Get Pat there, there's one. Take out the originals.
This is my copy, right?
No, those are two originals. Where do these go? One goes back down to... Where will we deliver these to? We keep one.
Yeah, and then...
Hillcorp?
Hillcorp will, will need copies.
How long will we have to copy them?
So one of them we'll keep, Pat.
Hillcorp will need a copy, and then the original goes back to the county.
County.
This one that I have, then it's all the original signatures.
Yeah, there's two of them.
So this goes to the, oh, okay, one of these goes to the county?
Right. Then we'll make a copy of one of those for Hillcorp, and then we keep one. Do you want me to handle that now? Just give them the note. That's the other pair. What else, Barry?
Uh, I gave Pat, yourself, and Carl a copy of this from the Hightower Services Agency, from a project I ran last year. It's basically just to close out the grant, and I'm just looking... They'd sent this to the township, I think we got it like the 18th or something after I made... I've reached out to them just to make sure that I'm filling it out properly. But if you just get out through, it's pretty basic. We didn't expand over top of any of these ones, so that's not an issue. The only question I really have is the one... Fairfield Township Trust, just the beneficiaries, I have to get some clarification from OCD, just to see what they want in this section. They're not really clear what they're wanting there. And I think that BMC has to provide that information. I've reached out to them, but they have not contacted me back yet. They want this back within 30 days.
And it's dated October the 16th.
Yeah, and we won't meet again until...
Yeah, come on.
We won't meet, I could probably call them and get an extension, if you want me to fill it out and come back to the next meeting with it completed. There's one of those grants, and I think it was the 39,000, it's just still about 340, if you look at it, pretty basically, the next, but the only question I have is the percentage of it back.
How would we know that?
Right, and I, the only way, I would have to go up to BMC and talk to them, to see.
And what's this got to do with the road?
I think it's just, I think it's just a piece of paper that they have to see that money was spent.
This is for Omega, right? The 39?
Actually, for the obstacle community, the OCD, but yes, the 39,000 was-
Was, the information's from the 39,000?
Yes, 39 was Omega. The 250 was a split, 125 each, one was jobs Ohio, and one was jobs in commerce, 309. That was the 250 split, 125 respectively.
So are they asking for all that information on you? For all of the...
Well, we don't have any differences to report.
No, there's no differences to report. That's pretty basic. Really, the only question I have is that one sheet in the back, and I've reached out to them, so... I don't know if you want to give me authority to do that, and I bring copies to the next meeting, or if you want me to get it done and get an extension.
Why, Carl? Why don't we just give Barry authority to complete this and sign it, and make sure Pat gets a copy of it?
I'll move that motion.
Okay, say again, Bob, please.
Because the total person benefiting from that project, that's unknown.
Right.
Really?
Yeah.
I mean, you can't put a number on it.
The only way I would know is if they would want to see any... If there's been any additional hiring out there at that property.
Barry, what I want to understand is, all of these have 39,000 written on them, nothing else?
The one has the 250.
It does?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, that's the passover, right there.
Let's see, third sheet in, Pat. The grant out the top was 39,000, and then, I'm sorry, you're right, there's 39 all the way across, and the one has 250.
Oh, well, I see it down below.
Total funds leveraged, yes. So this was the Omega grant.
So this is all just state funds, any of it, right?
Yes, yes. And I was gonna try to stop in, actually, at Omega's office in Cambridge, and just sit down with Dana Soder, and fill it out right in her eyes, and what she needs.
Because this says Ohio Housing. The area that this work was done in, industrial area.
Right.
Well, this form may not even apply.
Exactly.
I don't think I have any of that stuff with me.
I got it at home. I have a big mother in home.
I may have, Barry, if you want to... Now, I didn't... Well, here's some manual stuff down there.
Because if this was a residential area, that form would make some sense.
Right.
But this is industrial.
So you're saying this might not even be the right form?
Well, no, it may not apply to industrial.
Might not apply, that's right.
And maybe that's all you got to put in there was this was an industrial area, not a residential area.
Right. So that's really the only one I had. Any questions? Like you said, Bob, all the funds were expended. We didn't ask for any more money and it just was pretty cut and dry, so.
Yeah, but we don't want to leave any questions. We're on questions.
It's just a compliance form.
Right. Resolution number 2014-94, and would you repeat it for me? Or you want me to write this, please?
Well, you've got all this, right?
I have this, like you. Giving authority to... or authorizing authority?
It's a... Well, it's the Ohio Housing Nonprofit Program Final Performance Report regarding...
Up here?
Yeah, regarding this grant number.
Can I scribble on this one?
Yeah. I can send a copy to Pat, so we keep that.
I'll give you mine.
Okay. Grant giving authority to sign or to complete, raise to complete?
To sign and complete and forward.
It's Ohio Housing, Nonprofit Program. Final Performance Report.
Right.
And that is... I remember in that 39,000, there was a year old report after that she had to send in. That's essentially what this is.
That's why they're listed on the top of all of it. And that's the Omega one, right?
Yes.
Okay. Complete, sign, your housing, non-profit program, final performance report for grant number S-P-13-2-N-E-1. Want me to put that in the resolution? Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to authorize Barry to go to complete and sign this document we just spoke about. And that's pretty basic, all you want, isn't it?
We need a motion to that effect?
Yes, we will.
So move, sir, and to get you a copy.
Second?
Sir.
Mr. Humm?
Yes.
Mr. Garwood?
Yes.
Mr. Minor?
Yes.
So you will go and get what you get to get and then we'll complete it.
And that should pretty much complete everything.
Yeah, that was the last... That was the last of them.
Yeah, because that will be covered in the next audit.
Right.
Then lastly, Bob, I have... When the oil gas first started, I registered the township. And that's why we got this plaque so big. I don't know if you want to keep it in our files here or Pat, you want this.
What is it?
McNichols site. Just their permit for the McNichols site. We haven't seen it for the NOKR yet. Just basically, they send the township that information and it's got the... It's actually the unit size.
Is it just the McNichols one?
That's just McNichols. Yeah, we should be getting the NOKR. But it basically has the unit size, which is 1,207 acres. And then it also has the property owners that are affected in that unit.
You've got to file for all this stuff, don't you? Separating things. Well, we've got so many roomers. What do we have? Probably eight or nine roomers now.
I have some at home in the files, too.
Because you may have to make reference to some of these drawings and that.
I don't... Yeah, I don't think I have drawings, but I have the roomers itself.
Yep, that just basically shows who's affected, who's in the unit, who the property owners are.
Right.
Just an informational letter?
Pretty much. Just to remind the township.
Maybe I can just get a copy and reference that up here.
Okay. But now probably ought to keep the originals straight. Especially if we have issues and people are showing up and at least you have someone to pull out and talk to.
We have a file that has everything that we've done with Hillcorps thus far.
So November 3rd, 2014 letter.
The other files from the past, but I have a file right now that's everything that we've done with these two new sites.
Need a copy.
I want a condensed copy of the copy.
Do you want to... Well, that's good enough for me. Does this the same thing?
It's the same one.
Yeah, it's just been charmed.
And that's all they have, sir.
It's whatever you want. I'll make a copy.
This is yours.
Fellas, I gave you a copy of a letter from the Village of New Waterford from their mayor, Shane Patrone, regarding the fire contract between the village and the township. I gave Pat a copy of that letter also. Remember, they went back to... They wanted yearly contracts. They didn't want things to end in April or in May and that. So look that over. Maybe at the next meeting, we ought to have an executive session, discuss the contracts. We just signed a three-year with Letonia.
I like this idea. I like that idea.
With Letonia. And then we also... We've got a one-year, but theirs is April 1st, I think, of every year.
Right now, we're okay to pay out in January. We're okay, which might be a time when you're not.
Right. Well, when we did the temporary appropriations.
Yes.
We made sure there was money in there.
Yes, there is.
To take care of that. So just food for thought, something... The levy was passed, but these fire contracts are getting to be expensive. All the levy money's going to the three fire companies and I don't know where we're going to be three years, four years, 10 years from now. So food for thought. And then Lance, the city manager from the city, called me today and wanted to know what our position was on C Base. And those were the folks that were here at the last meeting that gave that presentation on what they had done in Salem, and they wanted to do something... Columbiana wants them to do something similar to that. And the Chamber would like the township to become part of this. There was a monthly fee involved. It was about 100, what, 150-some dollars a month? I think that's what he said at the last time. I think the total cost was like 10 grand. They had a grant, I think, for four or something like that. I... I thought it was going to be more than what we were shown. So I don't know if we want to be part of it or not, but that's the decision we're going to have to make here. Lance kind of wanted to know if we were interested or not interested.
I think we should do it.
Well, some of the examples, you know, they had the city. They were showing water lines, sewer lines, and a lot of that stuff wouldn't apply to us. So I... I don't know if we could write... If we could tag along at no cost to the township, I don't have a problem with that. But if there's going to be a cost to the township, I think that's something that we're going to have to discuss further.
Yeah, because it's $3,500 is what they're looking for essentially.
Yeah. And all the information that he presented, it's out there anyhow. All they do is collect it.
Well, that's why I'd ask him how many hits that website's gotten.
Yeah.
Social dot.
Right.
He sends to City of Salem, and that's my person. Because I agree with you. I think there's some duplication of material there that you can get. If you're looking for industrial sites, if you're working with a realtor, they're going to have that information for you as the site's being marketed.
Yeah. So I don't know if it's worth the cost, really. I guess we're on that. But whatever you guys would like me to pass along to Lance, I'd be more than happy to.
That's fine. You and Barry.
Because we've got the Route 7 channel and we've got the property between Letonia and Columbiana. So I would think a realtor that's looking for someone, especially a commercial realtor or industrial realtor, they're going to be calling the poor authorities anyhow.
Right. Any company that does it due diligence, they know what's there before they even make a phone call.
Right. Yeah, I just expected more than what we were shown.
Right.
So what do you want me to tell Lance? We're still thinking about it, or we're not interested? Or we'll go along if there's no cost?
I think at this point, for the information that was there, I don't think it's enough. It's got to back with the township.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that. The city seems to be real enthusiastic about it.
Right.
All right, well, I'll just... Is that all right with you guys? I'll just tell Lance we're not interested.
Whatever you want to do.
All right, he'll know it tomorrow anyhow after he reads the paper. Well, it is what it is. And I got a fax from Casey Talbert. He's the railroad lawyer from Toledo that we spent time with on and off for a good year. He's been wanting to talk to me and I've not returned any of his calls because we don't have anything to talk about. We had public hearings, we had the vetting process, and we took a look. So I got this fax on Halloween, figured I'd forward it to you folks. And in there, he wants some big wig, Bill Harris from Norfolk, to call me to discuss this matter briefly. I don't know what there is to discuss. I think at the hearings and that, that we had the input. We basically wanted a separate entrance for this truck terminal railroad thing. So I don't know what I... What there is to say. Because when they left that night, they indicated they were going to file the appropriate documents with PUCO and do a force closure.
For the in-store closure.
Yeah. And I thought that's what they were going to do.
And that was presented at the very first meeting.
Yeah.
There's two options.
So evidently, that option isn't working out for them. So my position prob... I'll listen to what he has to say. I'm going to ask him to reduce it to a hard copy and I'll send it to you. And we'll discuss it at the next meeting or whenever I get it. And I think that's all I have. Brian. How do you... Your last name is spelled C-H?
I think it's Brian.
I think Brian's gone.
You don't like us? Okay. Well, Ray, you're up next. You're G.A.S.
And you don't know who the other guy was left?
Well, I think he was one of the oil and gas guys, Brian. It looks like C.H. L.N.B.U.S.
C.H.L.E.B.U.S.
Yeah.
That name sounds like we've had that someplace before.
I thought I recognized him. I think it's Brian.
I am thinking that name sounds familiar.
Well, he's left. Ray, what do you got to tell us?
I don't think I can tell you. I was listening this here.
Oh, okay.
It's just, you know, about the plant that was brought up last meeting.
Yeah, and it's really caused a lot of confusion. The calls I got, people thought it was a done deal and like, no. They have to make an application to the Board of Zoning Appeals for conditional use. Then the neighborhood is notified, what's going on. It'll be on the website, plus the notice will be
Newspapers.
Newspapers and that. And then what we will have is a public hearing. Everyone appears, they appear, and we try and answer everyone's questions and see what they want to do.
Real quick, what exactly is being proposed on...
We don't know.
We don't know. They have... The guy showed up at the last meeting with pictures.
The central processing facility is what was said in our last meeting.
But they don't really know what that is.
Of Brian waste of some sort or...
No. A central processing facility separates the water from the gas. And then if you look at... You go out online and just Google central processing facility, it'll, boom, tell you exactly what's there, what it does. And I can't speak to the exact processes, but a central processing facility is built within a field of wells. It's gathered to a site, and then the water is removed with the gas. And then it's shipped to market, a central processing facility.
These songs are quite a big, quite industrious.
I don't know.
Well, one of our questions was noise.
The process.
Yeah, you get industrial. Anything industrial, yeah. It is industrial.
Well, that's why they need to make an application to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Can you run command, Jim? The natural gas processing plant isn't what's here. It's a national production facility that's here.
Says where, Pat?
Where? This was straight off the tape. They sent information regarding a central production facility that is located Fairfield Township. And down below, his notes that he read, "An industrial processing plant is not what we are proposing here in Fairfield Township."
It's a central processing facility.
And all we're doing is removing the...
Production facility, not processing.
They just call it a central facility in the picture.
Well, it's not what's in...
What they want to call it. They...
Well, it's not a cracker plant, I know that.
Yeah, everything you have that's processing.
Everything I've heard in songs is processing. But like I said, too, they make an official.
Yeah, they have to be.
It's all this talks.
They gave me photos of what it's not, if y'all want to see that. But yeah, they just say central facility. It's actually... Let's see what she calls it.
Well, I took Ray from the tapes.
Well, he may have got things confused.
I don't know, because I... If you're losing your minutes on page...
No, I meant the guy that was here.
I understand, but that's what I'm quoting, is that...
Because he was showing us photos of both types.
Remember, he wasn't out. He was, I think, just handed this and told to draw. Remember, he wasn't out, he was, I think, just handed this and told to drop it off here. That wasn't his department, right?
That's the guy that didn't have courage yet.
He was new.
Yeah, he was brand new.
Very new. So, but all I see is it's called a central facility, and that's why, just to reassure you, this isn't an application. I mean, the fact that we can't tell you is why this is not an application yet. If and when they would make one, or anyone, I don't want to just tear them down. Anyone who would make an application to do something that's not residential or agricultural in your neighborhood, I'm assuming you live over there, they would go before the Board of Appeals. They would have to have a lot more information than three pictures. They would have to give information to the board about traffic, noise, pollution. If there's anybody who has permitting authority over them, whether it's the EPA or some other entity, they would have to bring all that to the board. And I promise we will make sure that everyone, if you're adjacent, that means if your property touches it, including behind, across the street, diagonal, you'll be notified. We'll also put it on our website. We'll mention it in meetings. We, we want you to know, trust me. We're not trying to, it's a bad night if the board meets and none of the neighbors know and they don't come out. And in fact, you'll get a certified mail, because we want to know that you know, if that makes sense. So, we kind of overkill on our, I would say we over, in fact, the trustees over the years have been, actually have me, I send it regular mail and certified mail. And a lot of people, why did you send it to me twice? Well, some people won't pick up certified mail, but at least we can say, we tried to get it to your house, you know. So, you will be notified, and it will be, when, if and when anyone makes an application, it's going to have a lot more of the detail that you're asking about. Will be, they should come and be able to answer reasonable questions like, what is this? What are we doing? Because we just don't have that information right now. So...
I would imagine that you, you even have an idea whose land they're talking about purchasing? An acre or five, isn't that?
They just said section twenty-eight. I mean, I'm assuming, I realize this is all public, right? They brought it to the meeting. It looks like it was section twenty-eight, which is, you can see it on that map. Again, they have made no application, so right now everything is, we're just, this is a hypothetical. Yeah, they haven't made, this is a map I got from you, Melvin, so I'm assuming it's still good. I mean, they haven't replaced it.
That's the only map that we.
Yeah, it just shows that it's, I don't know if you can see it from here, it's section twenty-eight. So, we are here, basically in section twenty-two, so it's just down the next section. And you can see it better on there.
Okay, a purchase, they're taking you.
We don't know.
I don't know. Yeah, they don't have to get permission to purchase, so they don't, I mean, they can.
No, it's, no, it's.
We don't know.
You don't even know that. Yeah, all right, you wouldn't know.
My land is section twenty-eight, it's on this side of the road.
Correct.
In between.
Right.
They would have to access that.
Like a hypothetical.
Section twenty-eight. Here's what you're thinking of. Your side of the road.
Piecing together what we have, I believe it's section twenty-eight.
And then the formal proposal.
Again, I want to make clear, we are having a, they have made no formal disproposal, so I don't want either them or any neighbor in that area to be held accountable for. One representative came to a meeting, it wasn't even his department, and said, oh, they asked me to give you this. And then we emailed, I emailed the representative to say, this is how you would actually make an application, and she just.
Shame to do something like that out here. This area.
Anything else?
That's it. Is your mind over we did all that?
Thanks for coming.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
Anything else from anyone?
And before, do you all know how to give, I mean, you're always welcome to check back. You're welcome to call me and say, did anything happen? But we put everything, if you're not, I'm sure everyone reads the paper, but if you don't, you can always go to the township website. Do you see the address? It's FairfieldTownshipOhio.com.
Every other Thursday.
Always it'll be right under announcements.
First and Third, seven o'clock.
Yeah, First and Third.
More people, I'm sure, deep, though. Basically, more. Interesting.
Yeah, because the local authorities really don't have much control over this oil and gas. It's all controlled by the state, Department of Natural Resources. So, there's only so much we can do.
Yeah.
So, that's why we're having a public hearing, because people want to know what's going on. And I would think it would be in their interest to let everybody know what's going on and answer all the questions. Well, our experience with the pipelines and the rumors up to this point, it's been great. I mean, they've, they've hired professionals, and whenever there's been an issue or a concern, they addressed it.
I've heard that, yeah. I know from dog pups who moved both on this east-south that oil companies.
Uh-huh.
And none of you drove on the effort.
They leased them out.
Yeah. They helped us, they want to do equipment anyway.
A lot of people were asking me what's going on down lower up there, not over there by the, by the little gas pipes out there. They replied, they're not putting lane in there.
They don't have, what he just said is, Doug, it's a little bit of a gray, they don't have to go through us, they don't have to go through zoning for sure, for wells, right, wells and paths. So, I'm assuming it's something to do with.
Because they've made a, a deal with the landowner. So, that's their personal contract. The only time we're involved is when they're on township roads. The county's involved with county roads, and the state's involved with state roads.
And some of their deals, they're okay, but if Carl Burr would lease some ground and plant corn on us this year, next year if he wants to lease it again, he's got to pay another for using it. But the neighbor, they put the pipeline through her, and now here, here, you can have the ground back. Now, you're going to pay taxes on it, but we're still going to use it every year, you know? And they pay you once, and they use it every year, that pipe being used.
Yep.
See, I, I, I think they ditch it. Maybe you own the ground, you can't do anything with it, but you've got pipelines through the middle, you can't stop, you know? Farm it, that's about it. And they're still putting the gas to it or oil or whatever. So, they get to use it every year.
That's why they.
They want to go.
They get contracts and the landowner signs it in exchange for some money.
Yeah, I remember, probably went to three thousand twenty-five feet across that. It was twenty-five bucks, what? And they go, oh, another pipeline. I said, wait a minute, that's for one. Then the guy signed it for two, they let him go for two. And, and I guess, but I said, remember now, next year, that, that pipe's still there and they're still using it. They're not giving you anything now. You get that one ninety grand and that's going to be it.
That's right.
Thank you.
All right, take care. Motion to adjourn?
Go move.
So, the January second meeting is a definite. We didn't change.